Okay, thank you. We're calling this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, October 13th at 12:01 PM. And let's do some introductions. I'm the Chair, Pete Peterson. Who else do we have with us today? It's on the committee.
Suzanne LaFrance.
Okay. I see Crystal Kennedy, I believe, is with us.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Quinn Davidson asks to be excused. She said she has a work meeting all day today.
Okay, yeah, I remember seeing that email, so she won't be joining us.
And Ms. LaFrance, did Mr. Constance ask to be excused too?
I am not aware, Ms. Jones, but I will contact him.
I see Mr. Gates has joined us. Yes, hello.
Pete, this is Crystal. I'm here too. My app keeps crashing though, so I don't know how long I'll be on. But anyway, I'm here now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Mr. Peterson, it appears that you do not have a quorum of the committee here, but you can proceed with an informational meeting. In my opinion, you cannot take any action in the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Jones, that's, we're just providing information today on the new business. The first thing we have is the election update from Juno. So if you or Erica would like to provide that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Erica McConnell. The Juno City Clerk is here in Anchorage and has been since the second part of last week. She's here to manage her election. We have processed over 8,000 ballots for the Juno election, and we do have several hundred more to complete. We have talked to you in the past about how we have separated the processing of the Anchorage special election with the Juno election. So we're processing for the Juno election in the afternoons, and we anticipate that all our work on that election will be wrapped up by the end of this week. I believe the Juno Clerk leaves on Saturday and will take her materials back to Juno with her. And my understanding is that certification for her election is planned for next Tuesday.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Any questions or comments from committee members about the Juno election update? Not seeing any. We can move forward then to an update on the special election.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to start off by giving you an update on the communications that we've had regarding the special election. Since early September, we have issued one press release each week to keep the media and the community informed about various aspects of the election. We have been doing regular social media postings that actually have become daily starting this week. And we are reminding our social media followers both about the, our election officials that work on our election and how they are our friends and neighbors, how to get vote ready, which includes reminders about being able to receive a ballot at a temporary address, how to return a ballot, the various ways that a ballot can be returned, and things like that. And starting today, we'll be beginning to post some information about the returns that we have received. And with that, I will note that we have begun processing special election return ballots, and to date, we have received approximately 4,000. Consistent with best practices for elections, we are continuing to provide many different options to vote. As the committee is aware, we sent out, mailed out our military and overseas ballots over two weeks before the standard mailing. Our vote center at the Lusac Library is opening next Monday, which is eight days before the election, and will be open every single day, including on Saturday and Sunday, with hours for people to walk in and vote. So those hours are included on the voter instructions that were mailed out to voters and are also posted on our website, so people can find information about that. We'll also remind people on social media about that as well. As you may recall, and this isn't specifically about this special election, but as you may recall, we've entered into a contract with Ballot Trax to provide ballot tracking services. This is considered another best practice for elections. And while the service, ballot tracking, won't be available to the general public until the April 2022 election, we are doing a test with the special election with a very small group of voters from District 4 just to, you know, get all our ducks in a row and work out our procedures for ballot tracking. And with that, that's what I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from committee members about the report from the special election? Not seeing any. Well, I think it's great that we're getting to practice a little bit with tracking the ballots in the special election and so that we can be ready to go have that service available for the entire election next April. That seems like a reasonable thing to do to me. Anyway, let's go ahead and move forward and talk about the date change for the public session of Canvas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So municipal code requires the public session of Canvas be held on or before the third Friday after the election. We had tentatively scheduled the public session of Canvas for Friday, November 5th, but due to the schedules of some of our commission members, we have moved the public session of Canvas to occur on Monday, November 8. There will be a work session in the afternoon, and the official meeting, the public session of Canvas meeting, will begin at 5 o'clock on Monday, November 8. The commission will review all of the preliminary rejected ballots. They will vote, and then we will bring their report and the clerk's report to the Assembly on Tuesday, November 9th for certification.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that update. Any questions? Okay, Ms. LaFrance said that Mr. Constance is excused. He'll join us later if he has a chance to break away. Thanks for the information, Ms. LaFrance. Any questions from the committee about the date change for the public session of Canvas?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, please?
Certainly. Go ahead, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. And I got bumped off again, so I might have missed it if you asked, or if somebody answered it already. I'd like to know why the date changed. Seems like it's a shorter time period than we would normally do. So anyway, just a question about why. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. The public session of Canvas for many elections has traditionally been held on the second Friday after the election, and that is November 5. But there was a commission member who was going to be out of town for an important private reason and would be returning that weekend. And so to accommodate their schedule, we just moved it to the Monday after that Friday, which is still within the code-required period of being on or before the third Friday after the election.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Any other questions or comments from committee members? Not seeing any. Let's go to move on on our agenda to old business. Proposed changes to Title 28 and the Observer's Handbook. Any additional information you want to provide about that today, Ms. McConnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, the Anchorage Election Commission did meet in a public meeting to review the proposed Title 28 ordinance and the Observer's Handbook, the same things that we went over with this committee in the past several weeks. And they did make a recommendation for some amendments. Here's their adopted resolution, and they recommended that there be a little reorganization of wording on Page 5, that there was some language that was confusing on Page 8, and they recommended reviewing that to make it more clear. On Page 9, they recommended deleting a phrase because they felt that phrase was confusing and adding the word "ballot" before envelopes. And I'll show you these in the ordinance in just a second. And then in the Observer's Handbook, they recommended clarifying that for two of the four types of challenges, that it be clear that if there is an appeal of the challenge decision to the Election Commission, that that appeal would come before them at the public session of Canvas. So let me pull that aside, and I can show you. I made these changes in a tracked changes version here, which was supposed to come out in color, and it didn't, so I apologize for that. But I will point them out. These documents are posted on our website as well for members of the public who might want to go seek them out. So here on Page 5, the commission recommended that in this section that talks about how many observers can be at a polling location or a vote center versus how many people can be at the designated return location, they just advised reorganizing it so that Section 1 was about the polling location or the vote center, and then had an A and a B. A talks about the candidate, and B talks about the organization or organized group. So there is no actual change to the proposed requirement, well, actually, the existing requirement in code. It is just a reorganization of the language. The commission felt that this read more clearly for the public. So the changes are all here in Section 1, creating a new A and B.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Moving on to Page 8. This Section H was reading, May, this is about observers, "May ask brief questions of the municipal clerk or designee regarding processes used by the election officials or on the ballot envelopes." And they thought that read in a very confusing way on the ballot envelopes. And so I propose to clarify that this is really saying that observers can ask brief questions, one, regarding ballot processes used by the election officials, or two, about the ballot envelopes. So I thought this clarified what they found to be confusing.
Okay. That makes sense.
On Page 9, which, let's see, must be up here. Okay. So time for ballot envelope review. We had a very robust discussion at the commission meeting about the difference between tabulate and count. And the commission was concerned that this phrase for later counting of its enclosed ballot was adding to the confusion between tabulate and count. So they just recommended removing that phrase, which doesn't really change the meaning at all because it still says, "The election officials shall review all the ballot envelopes to determine each voter's eligibility and the status of the envelope as a valid eligible return." So they recommended deleting that phrase and then adding the word "ballot" right here. "The review of ballot envelopes may commence upon receipt." That's just a minor clarification.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So those are the three changes that they recommended in the actual ordinance and in the Observer's Handbook. When we go down to the Challenges section, here under Voter Eligibility, it doesn't show what was added, but what was added here is this phrase at the public session of Canvas to clarify that an appeal will be taken to the Anchorage Election Commission at the public session of Canvas. And a similar change was made under this second Challenge section to add at the public session of Canvas. So those were the two proposed changes that were made in this section of the Observer's Handbook. Other than that, everything else is as you reviewed it at your last work session.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee about the proposed changes to Title 28 and Observer Handbook that were suggested by the Election Commission? Not seeing any. I think, I think we actually covered our agenda rather quickly today. Not seeing any additional things. I guess we can, most of it's objection, we can move on to audience participation. Anyone in the audience that would like to participate? You have three minutes.
Hello?
That sounds like Mr. Haberman. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, they're muting me, and even after I say hello. This is wrong, okay? Thank you for connecting me, but they deliberately moved you to go into audience participation. Let me set my timer. My name is Eugene Haberman. I follow the public process. When the public process is unappropriately, decisions made by the governing body is more likely in the public's interest. First of all, when they made reference to a commission meeting and approving election law, I was present there at that meeting. And the election, and the, the election commission met, reviewed the document, made changes. And then after they made changes, then they had commission comments, and then they had public comments. There was no chance for the public to make any statements regarding that document. That violates state law, providing a reasonable opportunity for the public to be heard. It's more of the same. I was the only member of the public there. It's absolutely wrong. And again, the scenario of the having, running the elections for the Juno, who gave the authorization for Anchorage to be involved with other cities' elections? Still no, all silent about it. That's despicable. You have hearing by the statement here, the Juno Clerk's hearing here this week for their election. The fact is, their election should be in Juno, and that's where those ballots should stay, and they should be involved with the ballots in Juno. We have no business to be involved with another city's election. Where in America did that ever happen? And again, silence seconds. When the clerk said today, "It's okay to have a meeting for informational," wrong. You need a quorum. If you can't get a quorum, and look what this is about, election, election law. If you can't get a quorum, you have a different, you have another meeting where you can get a quorum. And the last thing is this. I know people are frustrated about dealing with the masks and all that kind of stuff and the type of meetings that's been going on. But it was absolutely wrong to lay on the table toward the end of the meeting an emergency ordinance with no public comment in passing that orders. You have taken action to divide the community in such a matter. That's horrible, absolutely horrible. This is not the time to divide the community, but bring people together to listen to each other respectfully and go forward. But the action taken last night, no matter what the reason was, was not the step to do. Because obviously, ten to one, the mayor's going to veto this thing. You, ten to one, will override the veto. And then the mayor's most likely going to take this accord and stay any action. And the end result is going to be more frustration, more division in the community and the state as the largest city in the state of Alaska. We've torn the community more by your actions and by people of the public in those rooms and administration. This should not have happened. I plead with you to reverse your actions of what you can't because you did a motion of reconsideration that stops that. And now it's in the hands of the mayor to take what actions he's got to take, and this is all too bad. And also, you need a proper notice when the mayor does a veto so that bring the public a notice so they can be in that room. A proper notice doesn't mean a couple hours. You need at least a day notice, and I plead that you don't do that. A less than a day notice for that meeting. Thank you very much. And by the way, I pretty much collapsed in the room last night. I'm much better. It was sheer exhaustion, and I appreciate all the support there. I went in the car, listened to the meeting, and then came back in to gain my strength. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Anyone else want to participate from the audience?
Hello?
Hello? What's, what's your name? Make your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Francesca. I would also second everything Eugene Haberman said, and I'm glad he's doing well today. I did see him last night, and he did look very under the weather, and everybody is exhausted. But you guys are very despicable people. You absolutely ruined what little trust you had with the public. That was very crooked, and you waited until there was about 10 people left in the room. This, you guys have absolutely no ethics, and I don't trust any of you to run the elections. Every time there's a scandal, Barbara Jones is part of it. So I'm absolutely against mail-in voting. I don't think we should be having anything to do with the Juno vote. And it makes me worried about the recall efforts against Meg Zalatell when you guys can't do anything right. How can we trust you to do anything with ethics or proper? You have absolutely no trust in the public. You shut down our voices because you didn't like what we had to say. Cameron Hurd was sleeping.
This is not relevant to the ethics and elections meeting. Point of order.
I was speaking about elections.
Ms. LaFrance?
I have my three minutes, and I'm talking about it. I don't trust the mail-in voting. Do we have signature requirements for witnesses? Is that back on? How do we trust the system when it is broken and you guys don't follow the laws? It is broken. You guys have broken the city. It is disgusting and despicable, and no one trusts you. You have lost all public trust. Between Constance lying multiple times, despicable. And Constance had posted tweets on the 29th before the meeting that anti-vaxxers and anti-mastres didn't have brains, that zombies wouldn't even...
Not relevant to ethics and elections. This is not relevant to our business.
Relevant. It's definitely relevant. Hello?
Hello. Thank you for your comments. Your three minutes are now up.
I don't know if I was still able to talk. I have people talking over me. How much time did I have left before I was interrupted rudely?
I just had the stopwatch going. I didn't look. It's, it went to three minutes now.
Well, I was interrupted multiple times on speaking about elections. They just don't like what you have to say, so you just tell the public, you can't speak anymore.
It's not appropriate to malign character. And that is what testifier during her testimony.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrance. Anyone else like to participate in audience participation? You have three minutes. I'm not seeing anyone. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
No, no, no. Actually, I'm trying to get into your system here. I would like to testify, please.
Okay. What's your name, and I'll start you three minutes.
I'm sorry. What is your name first? Just for my notes?
I'm the Chairman, Pete Peterson.
Pete Peterson. Okay, thank you. My name is Noria Clark, and what was the other question you asked me?
You have, I was just going to say you have three minutes.
All right. Well, let's get started, folks. First of all, everything that we are talking about in regards to this, to the chairwoman, this is actually an ethics issue, so everything that we're saying is valid. I can tell you right now that in regards to the public and the consensus of this, there are many people who you're going to lose on your side because we're getting quite upset with this. Eugene mentioned that, and the fact that you guys are dragging this out and don't seem to care about the people. You're saying during numbers that emergencies are going down. We have real questions about, let's, let's see where these emails are at, and how do we know if emails for anything else are allegedly correct? I have a real problem with how the voting is done in this state in regards to mail-in ballots. Being from Arizona, I can tell you, they are not very effective or efficient. They're extremely easy to falsify. I can tell you also that as a registered voter, there's multiple times, like when Berkowitz ran, that five people who lived in my household, not one, not one who was registered voter, got their mail-in ballot. But yet, there were multiple people whose name was John, Johnny, whatever the rest of your names can be for that, and they got multiple mail-in ballots. This system is not working. We are not able to completely track this, and as currently you can see, people on any side do not trust the current process. And I can tell you that at this point, you're going to see multiple losses, not just for this, but many of us intend to file, if we have to, under Americans for Disabilities Act, and we will take this wherever we need to go. And that means that if that is removing all of you from your seats, you are hugely mistaken if you think that we, the people, will stand idly by and not work against you actively to take you out of office and out of your chair. And if you think for one second that I don't mean business, then you are seriously mistaken at the anger and the atrocity that you have created for yourselves amongst the American people and the Anchorage citizens. This is absolutely despicable. There have been multiple, multiple issues of ethics violations. For example, Assemblymember Dunbar walking around trying to get information that he was not supposed to have. He should have gone through the ethical ways of getting it. Or for example, the clerk, she's been giving information to Assemblymember Constance. We are constantly seeing this. We're also seeing members who are not paying attention in the assembly chamber. They're actually texting, "No, stop talking! We are tired of you!" You don't understand.
The testifier is speaking about, is making allegations about things, and Mr. Constance and Ms. Jones are not here or are not able to... This is, I don't believe this is the intent for public, for audience...
I'm not done with you. Just wait. I'm not done with you.
Your three minutes are up, ma'am. Anyone else have comments under audience?
Fired! You're all fired! Use my speaking powers, just as LaFrance decides to do. I'm an American.
Anyone else interested in audience participation? That hasn't already spoken. If you are, unmute yourself and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, Cani?
Yes.
Oh, thank God. Sorry, didn't have this work. Yeah, I agree with what's been said so far. We have no business being involved with Juno elections, and that absolutely destroys the trust of the public on anything and everything involving assembly business and otherwise. And I also agree, we are coming after you guys actively right now. We have boots on the ground to get you guys out of your seats. It is absolutely despicable the way you guys are acting towards your constituents, and we are coming after you. I just want you to know that. We're sick of it. We're sick of you. I have twin children, and I'm still out every single day to get you guys out of your chairs, and we are going to get you out. That's all I have to say, and y'all will fuck yourselves. That's all. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment? Unmute yourself and state your name. You have three minutes. Unmute yourself and state your name. You'll have three minutes to participate. I see some hands raised. Unmute yourself. Introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes. You might need to use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Okay, we can hear you. What's your name? You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Sherry Coburn, and I have some very serious concerns about the election process in the state. I'm concerned that we have, I think the last report I saw was 1,100 more people registered in this state than actually are reported as living here. I'm concerned, and I raised this concern in the last election, that Anchorage doesn't have its own voting records. They haven't been cleared up. As I've been doing phoning, I have been talking to people that have lived in other states for 15 years and haven't even lived here. I have been told that there's so much conflicting information. I've been told that, oh, you never take a voter's roll information off unless they ask you. Then I'm told, no, they're supposed to drop out after five years of never voting. Nobody seems to know what anybody is really doing. I have never in my life seen such dysfunctional organizations as the city assembly, when it takes an hour and 20 minutes to decide on when to have a meeting. You ask questions. You can ask three different people the same question and get three different answers. I'm also concerned that this vote, this write-in ballot, because we don't know how many people are actually out there and how many people might be picking up somebody's ballot. I have a friend, she has a property management company. She has 17 properties. On the last election, she said she had a ton of ballots, a box full of ballots, of people that she hadn't rented to in eight years or more or three years or whatever. So there's all these ballots running around. You guys don't check on any of the records. How can we have a free and fair election when nobody knows who's even out there? The canvassing, I don't know how more information isn't coming out. I am appalled when I've talked. When I was calling for campaigns, I probably talked to people in 15 different states, and they had, one guy was from Buffalo, New York, and he'd never even been to Anchorage, Alaska. So how are these people on our rolls? Why doesn't anybody care about cleaning this mess up? Why doesn't anybody be concerned about the process? I don't trust people being able to send in a ballot when you don't even know. When two eyes are supposed to be looking at that signature after they run it through the machine, I don't trust the machines. I would like to see everything have to be, all those mail-in ballots that you've gotten so far, put aside and have people verify that those people, have them come in, whatever, so we know who is actually voting. And we know that they actually live in Anchorage, and we know that they actually are in the district. How did people show up the polls and say, and then were told that someone had already, they'd already voted when they went to the polls on election day? How does that even happen? And I know it happened because I have had people tell me that it happened. I want to, I want answers. I want to know how there's this lazada because, oh, we don't care, we're just going to do however we want regardless, when there's so much lack of integrity in this whole system and in the staff and in, you know, I don't understand how we are deprived of doing our civic duty of being actively engaged in the election process when we're told we have to leave because the clerk didn't like
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Three minutes are up.
Well, did anybody listen this time?
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't already spoken, interested in audience participation? If anyone's interested, take yourself off mute. You have three minutes. Okay, I think it's, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.